Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the Wednesday, November 13th, regular meeting of the Town of Easton Planning and Zoning Board. We are going out via ECAT, as always. And if there's anybody here for the continued public hearings for 58 Mill Street and Owl Ridge Estates, we have requested a continuance for that, so that will not be heard tonight. So, moving right along. First thing up is continued public hearing, special permit, mixed use, 52 Washington Street. I'm assuming those mics are live. And I guess for the record, so who was not here the last night? No, Robert wasn't.
And I was not here.
And you were not. And I'm assuming, were you guys able to do your Mullen rule?
Yes.
All right. So, just so everybody's able to vote on that, so the folks at home. Okay, go ahead. Sorry, Walter.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. We were here last meeting, two weeks ago, to review our special permit request for a mixed use for 52 Washington Street. I believe when we finished up, we completed the discussion. I don't think anybody had any further questions. The issue at that point was that, as you just pointed out, two of the members were not here. So, we're back tonight. And I can do the presentation over, or we can go to questions? I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Why don't we ask the two members that weren't here, if you guys...
No, no, I watched it, and this made sense to me, so...
Do you have any questions, or comments? Stephanie, do you have anything else?
Nope.
So, and anybody on the board have any other questions?
Just a question. I don't remember if, they were difficult to find records on the, on town about approval and some permits for what you have there down. Did you, on this time, were able to find something new in this?
So, the permits that we found, we couldn't find any information that went back beyond 1997, right? The permits that we found were from 97 forward. 97 was the site plan approval, and what was it, the Mass Highway curb cut, when they expanded the site, for the site plan for what we think was for the Parrot Shop, but we don't even know that. They referenced the Parrot Store, but we don't know that it predated that. My memory, to be honest with you, is that it did predate it. And then, we found a series of permits around 06, 07, from when our client purchased the property, which was the septic upgrade, the building permit to convert the Parrot Store to the office, and then a miscellaneous building permit for some work on the residential side. We have, can't find anything prior to 97. And that was through our research, through the Building Inspector's Office, through communications with Stephanie, and through communications with the Board of Health. And that's where we were able to pull what we were able to locate.
My comment is that, being the changes so small as they are from the existing situation...
Amos, do you have your...
Yes.
Okay.
Being the changes so small in relation to what this property is currently being used for, I think there is no reason to look into any additional permits from the past.
Sure.
And we did, as a reminder, we did agree that we'll bring out the Building Inspector and the Fire Department for inspections under the Building Code and the Fire Laws.
Right, right, which, yeah, a little out of our purview, but good to, good to do. Everybody's insurance company will be happy to do that, right?
And that was, that was the one comment that we received from another agency. That was the fire, and that was in response to that comment.
So, is there anybody in the audience that has any questions or comments? So, I think we're... So, we need to close the public hearing. Would you like us to close? We didn't close it, right?
Please do.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of closing? All right. You want to keep it on a roll?
Yeah, sure. Motion to approve and grant the special permit for a mixed use at 52 Washington Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Have a good evening.
You too.
You as well. Thanks for coming back in. Next up, 348 Founder Street, special permit estate lot. Is this the one where there was sort of an agreement that they would not have to come back?
Yes, yes.
Right. Yeah, assuming that, I thought Scott was in, Jared, he just walked out the door with the tripods.
But I think that, that was my recollection as well.
I'm glad you said that. I'm like, where's he going? He's taking his ball?
Well, I happened to watch both of them today.
No, we're all...
He took his ball with him. I was up late for Tommy meeting last night, so I'm a little sleep deprived. So, okay, so the folks at home, this was the same one. We could not act on this at the last meeting because we did not have the sufficient amount of members for the, for a special permit. And this, basically, this was some land is, at the request of Conservation Commission, is being donated.
Right, so a portion of the oversized remainder parcel, or the estate lot parcel. But again, the remainder portion complies with all of the standards required for an estate lot.
This is Frank Wright. Okay, now I remember. And, yeah, so, right, everything stays. So, this is, so, anybody have any questions on the board? Anybody in the audience? So, we need to...
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
And I'll make a motion to approve the modified special permit to the estate lot at 348 Founder Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All right. So, next up is 58 Mill Street. So, we request to continue to the next meeting? Is that how we're doing this?
They were ambiguous.
So, we'll say to the next one and follow up with them?
Yes.
All right. So, can we do this as one motion?
Yes.
All right. So, someone would like to make a motion for the, both the definitive subdivision plan and the special permit of the state lot?
Second.
That wasn't a motion.
Motion to, motion to continue the public hearing for 58 Mill Street, definitive subdivision plan, and 5 Owl Ridge Road, special permit to the next meeting on November 25th.
Second.
But, Amos, for the record, I appreciate the support. We have a second. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All right, thank you. So, next up, I mentioned Peter has something to read. We have a public hearing, 19 Purchase Street, special permit in-law apartment.
I just cannot believe I have it yet. Grab a seat, I'll page on. Sorry, I would have asked for that, but I got so busy signing plans. Okay. Notice of, Town of Easton, notice of public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 41, Section 81 TMGL, the Easton Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 13th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the Mary Carnley Room, change to the Board of Selectmen Room. Town offices, 136 Elm Street, Northeastern Massachusetts, on the application from Aiden Hendry for a special permit in-law apartment under the Eastern Town Code, Chapter 235 zoning, Section 23544, in-law apartments, to allow the creation of an in-law apartment located at 19 Purchase Street, Assessors Map 38 U-Lot 49. A copy of the application to end plan may be inspected at the Planning and Economic Development Office, 136 Elm Street, Northeastern Massachusetts, during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application to end plan should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing. This notice is also available at masspublicnotices.org. Gregory Strange, Chair.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. If you want to identify yourself for the record with your address, feel free to present.
All right. My name's Adon Hendry, and this is for 19 Purchase Street, Easton, and this is for the creation of, or construction of an in-law apartment in the basement.
You're the, is this, are you the homeowner?
I'm the homeowner.
Okay. Nice to take care of mom or dad, I guess, so. Stephanie, do you...
Basically, the, the lot that they're proposing, constructing this, complies with current zoning. The in-law unit is going to be, let me see, and is within a single-story addition extending approximately 30 feet from the street-facing wall of the existing garage. That doesn't sound right. Location, it's within the basement of the existing structure, so it really won't create any kind of conflict from a visual perspective or contextual perspective with the surrounding neighborhood. We did not receive any adverse comments from the fire building department, environmental plan of health, or police. And again, you know, the board may consider that, as proposed, it is consistent with the appearance and character of the existing structure and the neighborhood. And they, he did provide dimensions that demonstrated that the, it meets the minimum requirement. So, what they're asking for is a 767-square-foot in-law apartment. The gross livable floor space of the existing structure is 1,212 feet. So, they're seeking a waiver of the minimum of 25 percent.
Sure. Well, yeah, I mean, certainly, so it's a finished basement.
Right.
Right, so it's not, it's not affecting the outside of the house.
Correct.
Board members, any questions or comments?
Yes, you have a detailed planning where the water will be going. I would assume that this includes some, some pumps, taking the water out of the basement, maybe some arrangements for taking your drought spots, and, right?
Yeah, so, we've been dealing with a water problem for the last two and a half years, and fortunately, this summer, we were able to find a, you know, good solution. So, the water is supposed to go, right now, the water, the way the waterproofing company set it up, is only like, maybe 15 feet away from the house. I want to go further to the back, where there's nobody. There's just trees, and, but I could even go further and maybe create like an underground tank to collect all the rainwater, and so that the water doesn't go anywhere, and reuse that water for planning or whatever.
Yeah, it's for you and the neighbors, both.
Yeah, for the neighbors, you know, yeah, we'll definitely have plenty.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, you just, you have to grab the microphone and just identify yourself for the record, please.
You want me to...
No, you can keep that one.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're both live. So, you can be recorded on TV.
Oh, okay, thank you. I was just curious, what did you say about the lot?
Just, did you name an address, please?
Your name and address.
Oh, Claire McMullen, 58 Purchase Street, Southeastern.
That, that was an error in my report. It was an artifact from a previous report.
No, it's not finished, the basement now is getting to be finished, to become an in-law, correct? It's not finished.
Correct.
Has the inspection been done for that septic that they, I mean, the drains that they put in?
Well, so, if I could, so, the purview of this board is, is just if, whether we can allow it as a, as an in-law or not. Any, I mean, I think there's some code discrepancies on these plans, but that, that's out of our purview. That'll be handled by, as they go through the permitting process. We're just...
My question is, an in-law, so does, can the, does the person have to live there that the in-law lives downstairs?
Yes.
Yes. In fact, they have to provide, at the time they submit their building application, they need to sign an affidavit that's submitted to the building and respective zoning enforcement officer.
Okay. And so, there's nothing in this that this could be a two-family? It couldn't be mistaken as a two-family?
No, I mean, legally, right, legally, it is not. We, we have a section of our bylaw which specifies if it's no more than 25 percent of the existing finished area of the house, you, you can do it by right. But again, according to the requirements that Stephanie laid out. So, in this case, they're before us here because it's, it's more than 25 percent.
Right. 25 percent would have been 303 square feet, which would be a very small in-law apartment. So, as Mr. Strange mentioned, the bylaw does allow the board to allow up to the 900 square feet, but it has to come in as a special permit. It's not by right.
Okay.
And if this was a, again, not, this, not our purview, but if this was, if they were trying to make this a two-family, it would be a totally different process. And, and it would, it would involve extensive renovation of the house as well to, for, for fire barriers.
Okay, so, just so you confirm, that has to be family. It can't be, you know, just rented, like in our situation in this town, we rent to students and everything, and that's my main concern, a lot of concern, is that it won't be owner-occupied, and, but it will be owner-occupied, it has to be, right?
That's the requirement of this special permit.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Looks fine to me.
Okay.
We would have to close the public hearing.
I don't have any specific questions, I think it looks good, straightforward.
Everybody, so, would you like us to close the public hearing?
I'm, I'm fine with it. I've been at this for a while, so.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All right.
And motion to grant the, the special permit for the in-law apartment at 19 Purchase Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion passes. All right.
And welcome to town.
Yeah. All right. Next up, Baron Estates, security agreement, request to release lots.
So, the board will recall that when this project was approved, the applicant came seeking releases of lots. The board agreed to hold lots in lieu of requiring a surety, whether it be cash or bond. The, and there were a number of lots released previously. The applicant, the developer, has done a significant amount of the roadwork, and the latest road cost estimate came in, Suzanne, do you have that here, the road cost estimate?
It's attached.
Okay, but it's on...
It's papers.
Sorry, it's on, it's on here. So, the, the latest road cost estimate came in at $290,277. The developer is asking for a release of six more lots, I'm sorry, seven lots, and is proposing putting up a cash bond of $116,000. So, I've, I've talked with the developer, and I said my recommendation at this point to the board...
Unless I am just going to ask him that.
Yep, yep. So, my, my recommendation to the board is, because the board had already approved holding lots, and will still be holding, what was it, will still be holding seven lots, right, Suzanne?
And also include the board half.
Oh, is it 15? Oh, we have 15.
We're, we're questioning a release of seven, so it's...
Seven, will be holding seven.
So, there are 15 remaining right now.
So, there'll be seven, that, that's right. So, there'll be seven lots, they're, they're requesting eight be released, and there'll be seven lots remaining, plus the board would have, the town would have, be holding a $160,000 and change in surety. So, I, I think the board could approve that and vote to accept that, with the contingency that any future release of lots, the developer has to submit additional cash payments to equate to the remaining roadwork that's been taken.
So, can I just ask for one question? I was busy policing the office. I may have missed it. So, I see, so I, 290, just looking at your worksheet here?
Yeah.
So, the, you know, 290 and change, about that 15, I mean, is 19351. So, 19 times six, so what's that six? I get lost, I see 15 left remaining, and I see six more.
I think, I think you made a mistake. It was intended to be eight lots that they were requesting released.
Okay, well, there are certain numbers here, so we'd have to know which ones they want to actually release.
So, that would make sense of like the eight and the seven, and I think 15, right?
Right, so...
So, when they were asking to release a lot one, right, Suzanne? The release lot from this amount are one, seven, nine, 10, 14, 15, 19, and 20.
These are all different, 1, 7, 9...
Right, you made some errors. One, seven, nine, 10, 14, 15, 19, and 20.
So, that's eight, like you said, correct.
Eight to be released.
So, if you take lot seven, and you subtract lot one, you get six, which is what it says here. But it says lots, so it's lots one...
1, 7, 9, 10, 14, 15, 19, 20. So, eight total.
Yes.
So, there's seven remaining.
You got it.
So, seven times 19, 351, is more than 167.
That's like 135 or something.
So, I guess the way to look at this is, once Stephanie meets with them, and we're, I, I understand the logic here.
Yes, yeah.
So, as long, so, whether, X, so there's going to be, they're going to look to release somewhere around seven lots, or eight lots.
No, there's seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There will be eight lots released, the ones that I just listed.
So, there'll be seven will be holding.
Eight and seven is 15.
Gotcha.
Correct, correct. Right.
And eight is 154, 808.
No, but seven...
Yeah, seven, so it's around...
135, 462, 67.
Not seven, eight, seven remain.
I was close, I was close.
Seven remain.
So, eight times 13, 15, 351, is 154.
So, the sheet says that we're going to still have eight. I know his math was incorrect, but he's requesting the release of seven lots, so we would still have eight. Right. So, but here's the thing, if the road...
Eight, that's...
So, let's backwards? So, let's back up for a second, to help, to help me understand this. So, the road, to complete the road, its estimate cost is 292, so regardless, it's kind of a moot point, how many lots are being released or held? Because we're going to do the whole thing, oh, no, I see, so...
So, I...
I get what you're saying. So, you, they're going to do a bond for...
They're going to do a bond for $116,000. So, the incentive for them to, so, why you hold lots, and then why you require cash, is incentive to complete the road, and, and you have cash if the town, or insurance bond if the town has to take the road.
Right.
So, the thinking, again, is because the board agreed to hold and then release lots without a cash surety, you, you're being offered a cash surety with recognition and acknowledgement from the developer that the board has recognized that going forward on projects, they need to do that. You're holding, still holding seven lots, that's a significant investment on the part of the developer, because the lots themselves are worth a lot more than $19,000. The lots are selling currently for $300,000. So, there's a lot of incentive, and that's what you want. You want the incentive. You want to make sure that the road's going to be completed. And again, my recommendation would be that it's contingent that any, as he requests, he sells those lots that have been released, and he comes back for the remaining lots to be released, that at that time, the board require that the surety match what the remainder amount is to complete the road.
All right, because more roadwork will be done. There'll be 174,000 left in roadwork, really, right? It's not covered by surety.
Right, and so, they will have to, they will have to make up...
That way, we don't have to do this every time.
So, why are we looking for 135,000, though?
We are.
Okay, we are, okay. So, this piece of paper is useless.
It'll have to be updated, so it's...
All right, I guess.
We need to update the numbers.
So, say, so it's, the 19, 351 times eight is what we want to hold?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. So, so basically, you'll work all that out with them?
155, 54, 808.
So, is everybody okay with the, in theory? And I'm not sure I see the rationale, but...
It's, it's...
Put aside the clerical errors, but...
It's not...
But I agree in, in the concept that, in order to get this thing finished, we've got to give this guy an ability to make some money. So, I, I agree with that concept. I'm not sure I agree that we're going to be fully secured here, but I'm not sure that it matters.
We're not.
Because we want the road to get done, and our best chance at that is to...
This equation really doesn't, it doesn't say, yeah, make, I mean, they're trying to, they're trying to make that case, but again, holding lots, the town can't sell lots, we're not in a position to sell lots.
And we can't take them either, right? So, it's just right, yeah, yeah, you can, but it's...
Well, they can, but it's a big process, it'd be a big process.
It's easier to take surety.
It'd be a big loser for us.
Right, exactly.
So, so... Cutting a deal makes some sense.
So, a motion right now would be to release the, the eight lots with a certain numbers, and in exchange for a bond or cash equivalent of a certain amount that's different than what's on the sheet?
I, I was recommending the 116.
Okay.
When you, I think, one more lot worth, that would be seven.
I mean, that's up to the board, if, if that's what the board...
Well, that would be the seven to eight instead of the six to eight, which doesn't make any sense.
Let's make it 120, sounds like a good number.
Yeah, any number's fine, I guess.
And I think, you know, it's like, we, because I guess, and this is fine, but we always seem to flip-flop on this, but going forward, what I'd like us, I'd consider, I mentioned this the last few years, but I know similar approach towns, you know, Bridgewater's done it. When you look at the numbers, there's no reason why the road should just be completed from the get-go. Finished paving, done. That way, because what happens, and I'm not saying specifically with this development, but what's happened in the past with Easton, think of a road, okay? Two and a half inches of binder, and then there's an inch and a half top coat. Binder is not meant to be exposed for more than a year or two. You know, think of it, it's large, right? What's binder? Inch and a half rocks with big voids in it. What happens? What's going to happen out here in the next couple of months? Those voids are going to fill with water, and expand, you know, freestyle, freestyle. So, so, drive through many of the subdivision roads at Easton that were built in the last 30 years, and the roads don't hold up that well, because they were all built under this expose the binder forever, which weakens, then you pave it. And then, we're on the hook for it. So, and people go, oh, we're going to destroy the road. Well, you know what? For what, for what houses cost, and what, what builders have invested, it's really not too hard to ask them, and we, we would put a bond up. When someone pulls a building permit, there'd be a road bond, like $5,000. So, that way, if they're lazy, and they don't put plywood or any other protection on that road, when they unload their excavator and they damage the road, then we were covered. That way, there's, that way, the town, the lot, they, they can have any of the lots ready to go that they want. But more importantly, the road's built properly, and it's built from the get-go. Well, and all they would need to do at that point to, when, as they built additional lots, is just do a curb cut. Oh, you put the curb, curb cuts in as you go? You know, I mean, there's not, well, you can always change it. I mean, these, they're not, it's not grand... We know that all these are going to, I mean, I guess you just don't know if all of them will end up getting built. That would be the only, but either way... Well, I don't think it's, makes any... But it's not, yeah, I mean, the thought is that, I mean, especially, just for, for this, this subdivision in particular, many of these lots, it's really just kind of one place the road can go, I don't know, with any thought ahead of time. I just say, it's a change of culture, I think we need to do, because... I think it makes sense. And the reason is, the reason is, it's fine, I don't, it's not, I'm trying to get rid of this process that we go through, but it's, it's really more, our roads don't hold up, and, you know, if we're, you know...
Well, in the agreement, one of the things that we, we realized is, for, if you go back in time on subdivisions, there was a time when there were agreements that accompanied the surety, which kind of lays out what is expected of the developer, what's to be done, the circumstances under which the town can, can draw on the surety, and it also has a, if the road isn't completed by date. So, we, we have been putting in two years for that. So we, we have been putting in two years for that.
Right, but I bet you there hasn't been a road completed in Easton in under two years in the last thirty years.
Exactly, well, but we're adding that now.
Right, but, but to your point, you've said many times, Tom doesn't wanna get in the business of building roads.
No, no, the town wants.
We can't touch it for this, we'd be, we'd be so.
Yeah, so I think maybe like, you know.
But it gives you something to go back to at, so, I mean, one of the things going forward is to look and see what the date is, what the date was that you approved a subdivision, and then go two years, you know, out. And if something's coming up to the two years, you call the developer and get a status.
Yeah, but realistically, we know that's probably not gonna happen because staff's so overbooked to begin with, and we all have day jobs. And why not, when you look at the, when you look at what it costs to develop everything, I said, you know, going forward, I think we just finish the road.
Before the lots are.
Finish the road from the get-go.
Yeah.
You know? I just, you know, most towns do it these days, and it just makes sense, it gives us a better product.
Not only that, I think overall cost of the road is less because you're doing that at once. You need to go back, overall cost goes higher.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's, it's just, you know, I just, but anyways, that's, that's really, just going forward, I think that's something we can, we can look at.
Yeah.
To tell you the truth, I'm surprised that they're doing it like this. I'm new at this, I look at this, and it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, that's why I wanna change it, because you just get the crap out of me. All right, so.
Should we be clarified, is it looking for eight lots?
Why doesn't the board state what they're looking for?
Yep.
Because you asked for eight lots, and you're a little.
Yeah, this piece of paper makes no sense. So we're all confused.
You say you have to top out a fifteen, that means six.
We all want six.
There's fifteen, should we get the microphone here or what?
Yes, yeah, that's the thing, yeah.
I think you need to look at what you provided, because this was shared with the board, and this doesn't.
So we're just trying to get the math to work.
Yeah.
It doesn't add up.
We're fine with the concept.
Greg, she was asking for you.
Glad you didn't have the microphone.
Okay. Here's how it goes. It's less simple than last time. And by the way, this check is made out to Gregory Strange at all.
I'm sorry?
Those opinions expressed by the applicant. And that.
Yeah, we have, we have it.
So we just don't understand. So just, so here's the thing, I get the two ninety and change divided by fifteen.
Okay, I went through it.
But then, yeah, but then the six lots and the seven, I don't, so.
The six lots, it's not seven.
And roadway work left to be done, and let me, one provider, when he has two ninety, come Monday, there's about sixty thousand knocked off of that, but he, you know, so realistically, about two thirty. But this is the estimate that was in place as of October, okay? And there's fifteen lots that are still under the Form E, that haven't been released. If you take twenty-nine, two hundred and ninety divided by fifteen, it equals nineteen thousand, three fifteen, eighty per lot. We wanna get six lots released. So you take that nineteen, three fifty-one, eighty times six.
It is, it's a tight error.
It equals one hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and eighty cents.
Yeah.
And if you took that, you know, times fifteen, you'd come up with the two ninety, two seventies.
Well, but then, but then.
It's an error there.
With the next sentence is where we got thrown off.
Release seven.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, no, no.
But there, there is an issue there, it says seven, but lot six has already been released.
Yeah, I, I.
So it's nine, ten, fourteen, fifteen, nineteen, twenty.
Kenny swapped lot six for lot one, and I didn't know about it, so that's, that's an error, that should be six lots, so.
That makes sense now.
Six lots, nine, ten, fourteen, fifteen.
So just eliminate the number of six, is what you're saying?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Put a six there and get rid of the seven, make that a six. How's that?
Makes sense.
Okay. That clarifies everything.
So six is gone, okay?
Yeah, I was kinda tired when I did this, and.
Yeah, so those six lots.
Too busy picking your woodrow.
So those six lots plus the one hundred and sixteen thousand are the surety for the remaining of their.
The one hundred and sixteen to surety for the six lots, correct.
But no, realistically, like, we need to know the cost estimate, it's down to.
Should drop down like. Two twenty-eight, nine, two thirty, something like.
Two, two thirty, two twenty, two thirty.
Yeah, what was that work that you'll have done, that's gonna be done tomorrow?
No, it should be done by, within the next week, depends on the weather, but that is irrelevant to the next.
Next time it comes around, we'll be using like a two thirty figure, divided by the number of lots you want to release.
Yeah, so you wanna make a, go ahead.
So the form that Suzanne prepared, the Form F, has eight lots.
And we want six.
Well, because, again, it was very confusing.
Could you, could you?
Well, what's up, can we do the form?
Yeah, so it won't be signed by the board tonight.
I can, I can come in tomorrow and sign it, so two others can.
Yeah.
Can't be signed tonight, Stephanie.
Okay, Moss can, okay.
So you want the surety?
I can come by in.
No, because it's not correct.
Yeah, it's not correct.
You can't.
We already signed it. Look at that, to help quickly.
So if, so you wanna do the bond or cash for, say, a hundred and sixteen thousand or a hundred and twenty? What, I don't see what the point of the eighty cents is there. What do you wanna do? One sixteen or one twenty?
She had the arithmetic right up top, nineteen, fifty, eight times six, that part is correct.
Okay, I'll do one twenty, so I'll make a motion to release slots nine, ten, fourteen, fifteen, nineteen, and twenty in exchange for a bond or a cash equivalent in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars given to the town of Easton.
Where'd you get the other four thousand bucks?
Oh, I said one sixteen or one twenty, so that's.
One sixteen works out to the bond tomorrow.
Close enough, I think, to, after we round all these numbers, that's good.
Well, I think they have the bond already.
We already have a check made for that.
Well, I didn't know that.
So the check's one sixteen?
One one ten with eighty cents.
Okay.
Hey, this made up the group.
I was just trying to get.
Still a strange one, yeah.
I was just trying to make it easier.
It's kinda strange.
Okay, now, I will amend that motion to release lots nine, ten, fourteen, fifteen, nineteen, and twenty in exchange for a bond or cash equivalent in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and eighty cents.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Easton, we're just trying to keep it a little more entertaining than last night's plastic bag discussion.
Sorry, guys.
And sure, can everybody continue tonight? Yeah, someone can continue, pretty much. Mills Street.
Good, get one on there, I think there's a restaurant on the regular form. You should have phoned me, what was the name of that place?
So you could, right? Hobart Meadows?
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
Tonight's agenda.
Yeah, Hobart Meadows. You mean on Tonight's Agenda?
What was it?
That's Bob Taylor's piece, down by the library, named Beland.
Is it a name now?
Oh, right, Hobart Meadows is Bob Taylor's piece, right?
Yes.
That's the one from Main Street, or is it, no, it's, let's name it a sub-derish.
Old Stable Lane?
Old Stable Lane. Old Stable Lane, okay, good, Charles. All right, so Baron States is done, so next we have Hobart Meadows.
Yes, okay, so they're coming in for.
Can I interpret you just for a second? So do we have to sign something tomorrow, or are we good?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And Suzanne will send her notice, it's ready.
Okay.
Or you can, you can start, do that first thing in the morning, tomorrow's thing, so.
Yeah, just, just so, because I'll be playing carpenter all day, but just send us an email. I'll shoot right out, I'll be in Easton.
Easton, if you're listening, bring the pizza. Know where I came from?
Yes, one of my planning board's greatest fans. All right, go ahead, Stephanie, sorry.
Okay, so.
Thanks, guys.
Hobart Meadows, they're looking for a lot release. And we never issued a Form E covenant.
I'm listening. I'm listening, I'm with you.
So we have never issued in the board, and never signed the covenant E, which is the binding of the lots. And they're requesting a lot release, we need to have the Form E covenant signed by the board and then recorded. What we're suggesting tonight is that the board also vote to release the lot and sign the Form F. The applicant will only be given the Form E, once he provides evidence of recording, then we will provide him with the Form F.
And this is the lot he created on Old Stable Lane?
Yes. On, on, no, this is, this is. What is the lot, Hobart Meadows?
The one behind the Chris.
Oh, so this is the one with, going up the paper road, I mean, not the paper road, the unpaved road over the bridge?
Correct, right.
Didn't we do that, I thought we did that last year? Okay, all right, so, so you need a motion to release the lot?
You did vote for it.
Right, no, I thought we did the paperwork, too. So you need someone to make a motion to release the lot?
Well, first of all.
Lots or lot?
To, actually, just to decide. Well, they don't, but they don't have to vote on the covenant, they just have to sign it. Okay, fine.
So the.
And then it's a vote to release the lot.
So any of that associated work on improving that, that was done, is that what's the?
They're not doing any.
Okay, right, yeah, yeah, they're really not improving, right, yeah, so it's just sort of a, yeah.
No, you didn't close.
What is it called?
Suzanne, just read out all of this format.
Oh, this is, this is to the lots.
All right, here's like.
Where'd they use it?
Here's the rocker.
As it gets recorded.
There's the rocker, Main Street, that's the laboratory here.
Yeah, exactly.
You need to close that big mansion, don't you?
I don't, I don't remember this one.
Cash entrance.
This must have been on one of the.
Does the board have questions?
No, I thought we were just letting you guys do whatever you had to do. So what's the motion for to?
The motion is to release the lots after the board has, after the board has signed the covenant E and the applicant has provided evidence of recording the covenant E.
Somebody say so moved, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
I just don't rem, I don't remember this one.
This is before your time, this is, this one's a couple years ago, it's fine. Okay, we have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Are we signing that tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we'll hold.
Yeah, so it's already.
Stay to sign.
That's the church, so that's really cool, so it's this right here.
Okay.
It's a lot right here.
It's like by inclusive.
Yeah, yeah, to the, yeah, exactly, to the right. It's north, northeast of Chris. Or maybe just north of Chris.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's definitely west, because going, it's behind, Lincoln Street goes west, right? And north is to the.
Northwest.
Yeah, to the north main side, right, yeah, you're right on.
North by North.
Lincoln Street definitely goes west.
Excuse me. Okay. Oh, meeting minutes, or, well done, you ready for me to move on to meeting minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Did you ride the bike for this?
Nothing.
I thought about going for a quick bike ride.
Yeah, it'd be quick. Meeting minutes. Anybody?
Every view on it looks okay to me.
Excuse me.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October thirtieth.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. ZBA request for comments, company's a permit. Do we have anything on it?
I looked at it, it was on the, you wanna look at it, it's on the Board of Appeals' public view?
No, no, I've seen that part, I just didn't know if we had anything.
Oh, right, yeah, any materials?
Stephanie, anything you wanna say about it?
I have not had a chance to review it, what I can tell you is that it's forty-four units, it's an expansion of the existing Avalon development. It is located on the vacant pad that is right at the entrance to the Target driveway. It will, one of the things that I think it will do, and I think Greg might agree with this, as you drive up now, you have this vacant space, and then you just have the development. I mean, once you get into it, it feels more like a community, but really kind of jars on the landscape. This will provide, and they talk about it as a front door to the development.
I'd always hope that front door would have been a Chick-fil-A.
You know, we hoped it would be.
Imagine, imagine a park where they're working with a nice Chick-fil-A, right?
Kid Coke barbecue will be moving in.
Yes, that's right, coming up, but not till next summer.
Waiting for summer, I guess.
Yeah, no, they're, they have an agreement that if they tie in, so.
Okay, but I thought they, I thought they said they weren't moving till summer, anyway.
That may be, that may be, but it's not because of time.
Yeah, so I mean, so the thought in this was, you know, the town, we're gonna, you know, we're always fighting to stay in safe harbor or get close up. And if we're going to add more multifamily, that's, to me, that's the place to put, you know, up there. And there's certainly ample room, especially, and as we're rewriting this year, we're gonna really dig into the five corners.
Yeah.
Zoning, so we're ample, it's not like it's taking away a pad, it's plenty of, you know, ample opportunity, so.
I think, I think aligns with the development that is going on in that area, too.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what are we at, what's subsidized housing inventory, what are the numbers?
We are at nine point seven, and this, this will bring us up to ten percent until the twenty twenty census.
Yeah.
And there are other projects in the queue that will help keep, get the town back to the ten percent after the twenty twenty census.
So I'd say nine point seven is including the careers plaza, Chris type?
No, no, no.
So those aren't.
No, just ones that built.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, 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 so.
What happens if you're below ten percent?
Then you are subject to any forty B project that's proposed. The town is essentially in a position that they can't refuse it. You can, for very good cause, you can, you could fight it.
Yeah, but it's not automatic, there are different ways that you can, right? There are other ways that you can avoid that, so.
It's a comprehensive permit, and it's called that because what you're doing is you're bypassing those, the local zoning process. It goes to the zoning board of appeals, they seek comments, you, and what the, the way the application is submitted, they have to identify the waivers they're seeking from local, from the local bylaw, zoning bylaw. So for example, in most cases, it's a density issue, where they're building more units on smaller lots if it's a single-family development. In the case of multifamily, the town, you wouldn't be able to build under the current zoning bylaw, the standards that need to be met for multifamily, you couldn't build more than one sixty thousand square foot.
You're not going to get more than ten percent, no matter what you do.
So, so that, when they submit their application under comprehensive permit, they're requesting waivers, and the board will seek comments from the various permitting agencies, and you can provide those, and they'll take them into consideration, but they can't really deny the project.
I have a curiosity question, do we know now what type of population gets to this type of development? Is there young families, is it?
It's a mix, it's a mix. In Avalon One, what you're seeing is there's some young families, they, they have more school-aged children than they anticipated. I think they projected sixty-six, and they have around eighty school-aged children, but a lot of those children were already in the Easton school system. So what they think is happening is that they're seeing maybe families that there's been a divorce, and so the parents both want to live in town so that the kids can stay in the school system, they don't have to break them up. You read, there are a lot of baby boomers, you know, empty nesters who are moving in, they, they just don't wanna maintain their homes anymore, their larger homes, so they're moving there where everything is taken care of for them.
I think the question was guided toward the stress that we have currently in schools with the number of students.
The enrollment in the school, in schools in Easton is actually dropping, it is not increasing.
Yep.
Yeah, in the building itself, it's kind of a new version, new model they have.
Yes, yeah, it looks more like townhouse.
Yeah, so a townhouse, so it's a little more broken up, so. So, anybody, it sounds like we all.
Yeah, I just have a few ideas, is, you know, I mean, when you, when you think, when you get into like the local initiative and, I mean, if you look at the plans, I just don't see, you know, how the, I'm sure this will be addressed by, I mean, the Board of Appeals works with the different town departments to review the plans. But it's not there yet, are they already at that, is that ongoing as, as we speak?
Yes, yeah, they're requesting the request for comments.
So if the traffic didn't, just the traffic circulation didn't look good, that would have been reviewed during part of the process. Just, just because that whole section just seems sort of odd the way, all the, you know, the different.
They're in and out, it's.
Know what I mean? Yeah, that's the kind of thing I, yes, I don't know who's done what, and I don't know, so if, if this is my chance to comment, I would say it would be good to look at the traffic circulation. And I just thought, made a one thought on the interior atrium, that, that's just, if that's one of our regulations, I mean, that's, that's like solely for a safety purpose as far as.
Which ones?
If we don't allow, oh, you know, interior, or exterior atriums, well, outdoor atriums within a building. That was one of the waivers. Is that even one of our regulations, or is that? Yeah?
No.
No? No, it was, it was on the, it was.
Maybe it's a building code thing.
Okay, and that just seems like a safety thing, that, I don't really see why that would have to be waived, but that's just, you know, I wasn't sure if we had anything about that.
Well, it needs to be waived anyways.
Yeah, right, huh?
Well, I mean, they have to comply.
Well, they have to provide a list of waivers that, that aren't applicable, I suppose, but.
I don't know, if that's a local building?
Yeah.
No, I mean, we don't have local buildings.
Oh, right, yeah.
State.
Right.
When, when, when is the actual plans come to be reviewed?
I'm sorry?
The actual plans were.
They're, they.
They're online now.
They're online now, so if you want to take a look at them.
Yeah, like, those are traffic.
If folks haven't had a chance to look at it, I will be providing a report, because, um, you know, I'll be kind of coordinating some comments from the department. If you have comments that you would like, um, please send them to me, we can incorporate them.
Yeah, I mean, and just one other quick thought is that, you know, if this is, if they don't own this land yet and they're working with the, you know, with the, with the shopping plaza as part of this whole, um, you know, thing, I mean, the, the parking lot, the shopping plaza is way bigger than it has to be, so if, if there were, you know, an opportunity to improve that area a little bit, I mean, this would be a, a, a time when, you know, I know there's money involved, so it's just sort of, you know, but, yeah.
You mean like the Target?
Hmm. As far as, well, either on the, the Hannaford side, somewhere when you drive in there, you know, either on the Hannafords.
Yeah.
Side, or even farther in, just where those, the ends of those parking, area lots are never, never used. I mean, as you mentioned, like, a gateway.
They're, they're separate entities.
Oh, right.
Although they are purchasing the.
Well, that, that's what I mean, right, yeah. So when you say, you know, when you, when you drive in, there's real no gateway to it, well, you know, if you're, we're talking about, you know, gateways to the, to that little area, then some sort of, you know, more than a 10-foot strip and some, and that whole kind of corner area wouldn't be, you know, it'd be good for the site, so.
I don't know if that would be, if, if they would.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's sort of a, a lot of different, yeah.
I know one of the things, um, that the town really tried to push for, and, and as did Avalon, was a, um, connection, a path, a walkway from the community to the Target, and Target refused, refused to allow it.
Yeah, I mean, they seem like things that you would think about as part of a local initiative project, rather than saying, okay, great, we got a check, let's, you know, let's get this thing, let's get this thing passed.
You're talking about improving like the landscaping at the ends of the Hannaford.
Yeah, anywhere, if there's some unused, you know, parking area to, yeah, I'd have to drive down there to really, you know, think about it.
Well, it would have been nice, if you, if you look back at the original renderings that they had, there was going to be a lot of green space and existing trees remaining. One criticism I've always had of the project, is from the aesthetic standpoint, I always thought, what, people look at the rents they get paid, and all they do is look at a Target.
Well, that's what I mean, it's like where there's a.
Like, when they, you know, all their rendering showed all sorts of green.
No, I know.
But again, unfortunately, we don't really get to have a say.
No, but, but now, when it's a local initiative, and while there is a land deal going on, and there's a bunch of unused, unused parking spots, maybe there could be a chance to.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to add a comment, I, I mean, I, for that whole, it would be, to your point, or it's a, it would be nice if they went back and put in some of the, the greenscape that their renderings had, um, indicated they were going to do, so that there was a nice separation, um, between a residence and a parking lot, keeping up the, you know, trying to tie in the, the rural character of Easton a little bit.
We're not asking to build a, you know, a big park or anything, just, just make a little area with a similar. Yeah.
It would, you know, they, uh, instead they chose to clear cut and took everything.
Right. Okay.
So do, do we want to make a motion to recommend, just, are we going to do anything, or just going to leave it?
Do we just give the comments, or do you want to?
Yeah, we're just, I'm just asking what the.
I mean, I think you should submit comment, and these are good comments.
Yeah. Shall we make a motion to recommend with these comments, or are you looking for us just to give comments?
I. I think it's.
I feel like if, if we weren't in agreement, then it would be sort of, it would be better to have a vote than, I mean, I don't, I'm not saying we're not in agreement, but I'm saying if there were a case, when we weren't in agreement, we'd have a consistent process on these, I guess.
Right, I don't know.
I, I see no reason why the board shouldn't issue a memo like you have in the past.
Yeah.
Supporting with these comments.
Sure.
Yeah.
Somebody say so moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I'll have to vote for that.
There we go, all right. Chairs report, so, so do we, is there anything else we need to sign?
There is one more, the board, um, the Elmwood Estates cash surety form.
They did that.
We signed that.
Oh, you already did, so, good, no? Um, other than the, yes, these.
Definitely wanted to ask about the states that we discussed.
Okay, so. Oh, well, so here's the thing, uh, I mean, so we have meetings, you're talking about this one, so we have meetings coming, our next meeting's November 25th, that's the Monday before Thanksgiving, then December 9th.
November 23rd. Not the 25th.
Oh, this is the 25th.
Oh, it's, right, maybe I tapped it wrong, it's November.
That's the, that's the 25th.
This is 2020.
You're looking at 2020, no, he has, he has.
I'm sorry.
I can't think of anyone.
I have them here.
It's the 25th.
Correct.
So, so that seems fine, we'll meet, I mean, we'll meet the 25th, we have to, we have things, so, December, so, I mean, December 9th, my, yeah, December 23rd, what I, um, I, I mean, we've done this in the past, and that's two nights before Christmas. I would like to, if we could, yeah, if we could, unless it's something pressing, and I knew there's maybe, she said Frank Rabin may have a couple coming, so I'll, I'll give a call tomorrow, ask him, just, can we find, so we can do it on the 9th, and just, you know.
I expect that we're going to have a draft to review for, um, Judy, Judy has owed the board a draft, kind of guiding principles and some concepts. So I would expect we have that before the next meeting.
What's the timetable for?
The next two meetings are important, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I need to nail that down.
No, we're doing that, so, but let's just try and try to get rid of, because we still.
Let's assume it's a good draft and we have, you know, light comments, what's the timetable for us actually turning around and proposing that to the selectmen?
Well, before, before you answer that, I just want to, we still haven't done anything with the village. Well, only with her, we've only done five corners. So is she going to do anything on the, is she coming back? Or are you going to, or is she gonna, because, you know, that's actually what we started, we wanted to do the village for.
All at once?
So we're going for springtime meeting, we're going for springtime meeting, which basically means we'd have to have this thing wrapped up sometime in February, right? You know, when you step back on the dates.
Right.
So, is it possible to bifurcate it where we deal with, I mean, because it doesn't sound like we're going to have enough time to deal with the village and the five corners?
No, I mean, I think, oh, I think the village is important to do, and I, I think it's going to be much easier, because it's, it's a much more, um, defined area, and we pretty much know, we're really just looking, okay, how are we going to deal with, with multifamily in there?
Right.
And it, and we, because we, before you were on the board, we, we started to get into it when, two years ago, when we, uh, and we just pulled back because we were working on Queeser Commercial District at the time. So we don't need just as much, but the thing is, and that's part of, that's part of Judy's scope, but in those two meetings we had, which, we didn't get into that yet, so I just didn't know.
So, so the idea would be to wrap it all up into one and get both addressed at?
Okay.
Yeah. That's fine, that's what, I mean, I was really just wondering.
Yeah, because I think there's much more work, five corners, there's much more work to do, because it's, it's much more, much more open, it's more of a wild card.
Oh, for sure.
You know, so.
Right. And what we'll do, Suzanne's done this in the past, she'll put together the timeline, so backing up from the date and all the, the, you know, the timelines that we have to meet.
Great, perfect.
She will put that together, and we'll have the, this is the last day, you can hold a public hearing.
And, yeah, so, so I think of this, I think the only one we needed, if we can get rid of, would be the 23rd of December, which would be nice, you know.
Right, and that's what I was trying to say, do not, I mean, I think you need the next two meetings.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Okay, so chairs report, um, so last night, I'm sure you were all watching on TV, but the, uh, the, um, amendments to the bylaw to, uh, expand medical marijuana to cultivation failed. The, the general bylaw passed, uh, but then the subsequent zoning, which needs two-thirds, didn't, didn't pass, um, so, that's that. And also, the town, um, Friday, I can talk about that, right? There's no reason I have to keep it quiet, or is it a big surprise? Big surprise?
It's in embargo.
Okay, well, there's, I'll tell you about Friday next time we get together. Oh, and so. Can't say anything, so anyways, um, and, yeah, that's that.
What was, what was the, what was the pushback on the medical marijuana?
The same.
The same, what, you know, I, they really, I think it was more, it wasn't on zoning, it was more people that are opposed to marijuana.
I mean, if you look at how the town votes on certain larger issues, I mean, it's sort of a, you know.
Is it, is it, is it principle, it's not.
Yeah, it passed, it passed, and general bylaw passed 100 to 80, so it wasn't a very, like, a lot of special time meetings, it wasn't very largely attended. And then it failed basically on the same number, because you needed, you needed 120 to 60.
It's one of those, and with the people that oppose are very motivated to come and vote.
I mean, whether or not, like it or not, I mean, it shows that two-thirds actually has a, has a purpose, no, I mean, rather than, because it's something that should take a, you know, a, a good amount of the town to, you know, to really have.
I got up, yeah, you know, I mean, I got up and spoke at it, because a gentleman got up and had been reading the minutes from our meeting, and it was intimated that we.
Kind of split it.
Kind of went through it quick, and so I said, well, you know, sometimes we have to meet, there's, there's a clock that's ticking for special time meeting, this is an opportunity that came up,